Excellent.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to Thursday, December 12, 2024, City Planning Board meeting held in the Citrus Select Hearing Room of Office. Here is that post of your agenda is there in seconds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First item on our bit tonight is a public meeting for the zoning workshop. The proposed zoning bylaw amendments for the 2025 annual hotel meeting. Let me type this, it's a throw here. I'm going to just open this. But the planning board will be proposing zoning bylaw changes to definitions, accessory dwellings, and a site plan review to accommodate the Affordable Homes Act signed into law on August 6, 2024. The law of the law is to encourage production of accessory housing units, dwelling units, throughout the public level to address the housing shortage. The planning board came up with a bylaw based upon the law he got from town council. On 12/6/2024, EOHLC issued draft regulations for protected use accessory dwellings. And as a result of the draft regulations, the planning board has refined them to do other draft zoning bylaws. Several additional definitions need to be added to comply with the regulations. The draft bylaw adds state side requirements for ADU accessory dwelling units, allows restrictions for ADUs to not be shorter rentals, interments parking requirements, eliminates owner occupancy requirements, and has dimensional setbacks, site plan review requirements. If we have any power points, we also have to go.
Can I advance the slides, please?
No.
I'll advance the slides when you're ready.
Oh, I'm almost there.
Oh.
You're coming. Carrie, you want to get that one?
Alright, so what we're, the Affordable Homes Act is the governor signed this act into law on August 6th. Can you go back? Thank you. The law states that there, in section seven and eight of the act, that there are caps on parking requirements, caps on the size of an ADU, does not require owner occupancy, prohibits short-term rentals of ADUs. The state law takes effect on February 2nd, 2025. Okay. Can you advance, please? So to conform to the law, Cituit must revise its ADU bylaw. The EOHLC put out regulations last Friday, 12/6/24. So what is posted on the website doesn't 100% comply with what the regulations say. So we're having a zoning workshop tonight. We'll be having a public hearing on the zoning bylaw on January 9th, 2025. So the current bylaw, Cituit has had an ADU bylaw since 1989. We have approximately 136 ADUs ranging in size from 430 to 1520 square feet. Owner occupancy is required in the primary or accessory dwelling with condition yearly certifications. The size of the ADU is 40% of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, or 750, whichever is greater. The ADU needs to be subordinate to the primary dwelling. And we require two private on-street parking spaces for each ADU. Detached ADUs must be setback building height and yard requirements for primary structure. ADUs have to keep the appearance of the primary dwelling as unchanged as much as possible. Must be a separate housekeeping unit. Only one ADU is allowed within a single-family house or out of lot containing a single-family house. So that's the current bylaw information. Under the proposal, now we have to have a law by right, a by right process for site, which includes site plan review for section eight of the Affordable Homes Act. The size of the ADU changes. The ADU can be half the size of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. The planning board has chosen to provide a provision for special permit for a larger ADU, no larger than 40% of the gross square foot, but greater than 900 square feet. The planning board felt that this had worked for years in the town, and they wanted to allow that provision, part of that provision to keep on existing. So we've added multiple definitions, attached, detached ADUs, cooking kitchen facilities. We'll need to add a few more definitions. We are going to restrict short-term rentals on accessory dwellings. We cannot require more than one parking space per ADU. We can't require any parking within half a mile of a commuter rail station, ferry terminal, or bus station. There's no owner occupancy requirement. Dimensional setbacks still apply, and special permits remain in effect until they're converted to a by right ADU. So that's the brief rundown of what is in the proposed bylaw.
Which is not really set in stone yet.
Based on, based on the EOHLC regulations, we're going to regurgitate that, their definition of an ADU. We're going to regurgitate their definition of principal primary dwelling, as well as protected use ADU. We're also just going to say short-term rental is defined in MGL Chapter 64G, Section 1. So we have a few more definitions to work into this. Patty and I reviewed the bylaw with town council yesterday. Town council is of the opinion we should keep everything we want in here now. And as the process moves along the way, and we find out what changes to the regs might come, then we modify the bylaw. You know, we can modify up until town meeting based on current information that, based on information that's being developed as we go along in the process. But I reworded a few, I will be rewording a few of these things for clarification, but essentially, nothing has changed in the requirements on the, from the 12/4 version, which is posted, what that's the one on the website right now. We will be posting the legal ad. The legal ad goes to the paper next week, and we'll be posting for the public hearing next week, at which time we'll have a few modifications in the bylaw.
Anything anybody wants to add on the board?
Yes.
Are we going to, in our bylaw, we have left in over occupied.
Yeah.
We have to take that out?
Yeah. That has to be removed.
I just have to go on record that I concluded.
I understand that.
I think that's asking for trouble.
Doesn't that still apply to it not larger than 900 square feet?
Yes, that requirement we have kept in here. But we can't, we can't do it to a by right ADU. Can't have an owner occupancy requirement.
But you can't on a lot of the, on a lot of the 900.
Yes.
It is technically one larger than 900 is not an ADU by state law.
Right, by state law, right.
It's not an ADU at all.
Well, it is an ADU.
It's, we are calling it.
It's, we'd call it.
We're calling it ADU, but it's not, it's not in their definition of an ADU.
That's right.
And then using this terminology, protected use ADU. Because as you are aware, they have changed state law, so that they've changed 40A, Section 3, and a protected use ADU basically falls under the Dover Amendment. So things that you absolutely cannot deny, but you can have reasonable regulation on, like setbacks, bulk height, those are things that are allowed under, to be regulated under the Dover Amendment.
So to be perfectly clear, and we have listened to, I can't tell you how many webinars and seminars among the three of us. The governor is of the opinion that we are going to solve the housing crisis by building ADUs. Nothing about affordability, doesn't really care what they look like, just build, build, build.
Sure she's concerned whether our towns can handle this.
Not a word.
Nothing has been said about infrastructure?
Nothing.
Nothing? Nothing, isn't it? No, nothing. And it's.
I'm shocked about that.
Don't be.
So could I tell you that I really think if you read this carefully and you follow all the information, this was really designed for gateway cities. So looking at Tottenham, Lawrence, Lynn, where there's dense populations, where there is a poor population, and then they have a huge need for housing and they can't afford. I don't know how they'd be building more instead of above the rents. And I just, I missed that economics class. I don't know where that came in. If you'll build it, they will cover, I guess. I hope that would be.
But to go back to Rebecca's point, there still has to be conformance with Title V. There still has to be conformance with the Wetlands Protection Act. There still has plumbing, mechanical, building, all those codes have to be complied with. And so we're requiring compliance with that in the regulations, and we're providing, you know, we're asking now for a piece of paper from either the sewer division, or the water, or the, for to help that your septic or your sewer will comply at this adequate capacity. So they have to comply with Title V.
What's the tax implication of this is that now have ADUs? Have we discussed that?
I haven't discussed that with the senator. I have discussed that, and his opinion is that there's really not much of, it doesn't bring in really significant more taxes, because the value of an ADU, say, an attached ADU, ADU within a house, is not really anything. And a detached, maybe it might add a couple thousand dollars to the value of your home. So there, he's of the opinion that it doesn't, it's not going to bring in, you know.
Revenue.
Revenue.
You don't have, I just.
Okay, so.
Okay. That's, I did ask, that's what I was told.
Ms. Lambert, just to make you aware, we do have people, and so I would just ask people to speak louder.
So, so is there anybody in the room that has ADU to say about ADUs? And how about online? If you want to make a pledge, please raise your hand and capable lecture in.
Yeah, I can just unmute.
No. She wants to speak.
Who was that?
It looks like Bruce just came up.
No, no. It'd be, yeah, right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't really have a comment. Other than kind of reflecting back some of the comments I already made, that it's going to be stressing infrastructure and water usage, which of course I'm concerned about.
Thank you, Mary as well. It's, you know, like I said, we, this came out Friday, and we didn't see them until Monday. It has to be in effect in like six weeks. So I think this can be a lot of hints around when this filing comes out. But we have a very effective ADU bylaw out there, and it works well for us. So as long as we're not challenged on setbacks or whatnot, we should be okay. We hope. We just keep writing, every writing, every writing, every writing.
Okay, I just want to throw this up. What we're doing, if I understand this correctly, we are substituting this new.
Yes, yep.
For the old.
Yes, right.
So if the new is not voted at town meeting, it's done soon.
Yep.
We don't go back to the old.
That's correct.
And this is some, this is something that has to be hammered home, that we need to do this, whether we really like it or not.
It's the law.
It's the law.
Yes.
In a seminar that were in Thursday, it was said that, you know, I asked about the implementation February 2nd versus town meeting. And basically the reply was that February 2nd, unreasonable regulations are no longer enforceable. So anything that's in our bylaw that their statute considers unreasonable, it's no longer enforced. Every document, you know, all of that, as of February 2nd, regardless of what we plan to do. So I think town council has more to say on that, but the state's position is February 2nd, they want their regulations to take over, take advantage.
Town council has definitively stated that up until February 2nd, our bylaw applies. And that's what we are doing right now, and we're, anything that comes in between now and then is going under the existing regulations.
But nothing like that is a rubber pulled out from underneath.
Because once you get past February 2nd, then these regulations apply anything 900 square feet enough.
Correct, and town council's opinion is we'll take that on a case-by-case basis.
Well, certainly, if it can override existing permits, then one that's in process is certainly going to be able to.
Well, his opinion is take, we'll take it on a case-by-case basis, and we will, you know, we will be consulting town council frequently during this, this time period.
So we've already started to line up some issues, so if you want to submit comments, Carrie, we'll send you a letter from the town. We are, there's already a few things.
I mean, if you want, we can do, I could write a letter to them and say, I don't agree with not owner occupied.
You can do that as a private citizen. I mean, what they said is that on December 20th, the forms are going to be available.
It's important.
There's a form you have to fill out on the ADU website, so they want you to use the form, and they want, they want you to submit the comments. So you can do that as a, as a private citizen. Don't identify yourself as a member of the planning board.
Right.
Just as a private citizen, and the town will be sending some comments.
Full of points, I hope.
Yes.
Yes. And this is just, I can't believe that as of the 3rd of February, the ground has been pulled out from underneath us. And that is just not the right thing to do.
I don't, I don't know if you have had a chance, but go on the MATC website, and it lays out their thoughts on this, and their position on it, and whatnot, and from a town corner, it's scary, because they want to increase the density. That's their goal.
That's their goal. What's the website that you said?
The MATC, so Mass Area Planning, Metro area.
They're our regional plan, MATC. And they made that very clear, and they want to increase our density, and that's very clear.
And a town that doesn't want to.
I said, this is the law, so we are going to try to control it as much as we possibly can, and we know that there's going to be another iteration, because there are always this. But it's a double. And you need help.
Yeah. Okay. We need to stand up.
So if anyone else has anything about what we consider the new rules and regs above, I don't see, you know, like, the 750, what is this, the protection, the prohibited regulations, the owner occupancy.
Okay.
That would be, yeah, they're rushing. Like I said, I think, I think we talk, in your ADU seminars, in this, I mean, there are hundreds of people on this. And to be clear, though, the top lots of government, EOHLC, that the air command is to build, build, build. And as I said, I don't know how they, the rents is going to come down if you keep building. I don't understand that at all, but we will see. And we'll see how many applications we get, so this is what we can do. Could you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, yeah, John Martin, 22 Berries Lane. I just want to confirm, so the, no, no owner occupied, that that changes at over 900 square feet? Is that what we're staying on? Okay, so it's no owner occupancy under 900? And then who's on?
Because there's two, two different types of permits. So, so over 900 square feet still requires a special permit here.
Okay.
But under 900, you just have to buy right, by state, and then the ones that put that no owner occupancy.
Correct.
So John, though, if we don't vote our new bylaw, and that whole larger ADU is, you are.
You have to vote the same. You have no choice.
Right.
You have to do it.
That's not what we want, but that's basically states.
It's a dinner bill. Very bitter.
We as a board decided we want to keep that, but they may have a different situation in the future.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And there's background information, too. Town of Cituit, I can't find that we've ever denied accessory dwelling unit. Couple of them were withdrawn, because they were going to be denied, because really, they were not subordinate, but the town has not denied ADUs.
Okay. Any here, if you need to come over this, are we all set? All right, but none of the conversation, what's your other thing? We figured you had something to say, right? Yeah, come on.
He's here for, he's here for the next session to chat about item.
Yeah. And I'm actually generating these, not your seven.
Yeah. It's an A and R.
So, we can, we can go. So September, yeah, we have a home A and A and R plan, which is Clap Road, assessors parcel 17-40, 41, and 17-20-27, and 30. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Gregory Morris, for the Student National Student Union, representing the applicant property owners or subdivision, or pending our approval on Plan Blue, the existing properties located in the R1 zoning district, rather large inside, it spans across the town line with Norwell. The proposal here is to divide the property into eight lots. Those lots are the A and R plan. All lots have frontage on Thomas Clap Road, which is a public roadway, adequate utilities and access to the town of Cituit. The town of Norwell planning board voted and endorsed this plan at their meeting last evening. I turned it over to you.
So we do know they get or melt, yeah, as noted, for example, 16 lots, give us down a bit before 1:00, and travel melts underneath.
Yep.
So Greg, Greg has agreed to, and this morning on the bylaw, he wrote a handwritten note on like, by the 50-foot frontage, say, C note 16. He does have the note on the plan that says, lot two is not buildable lot without zoning relief, but I just wanted to call it to somebody's intention, because not everybody thoroughly reads all the notes on the plan. So this plan, the lots have access and frontage, and the plan could be endorsed.
They're really steep.
It's not our affair.
My problem, I know.
I mean, some of these lots are, have, some of them are in Cituit, some of them in Norwell, so the Cituit ones will probably have to have stormwater. And the Noel ones, Noel has other requirements for, for development as well, so people are looking, people are looking at the lots and we thought, so.
How does a 50-foot lot qualify as frontage?
It's when they get zoning relief.
Well, they don't have.
No, not yet. No, they don't have zoning relief right yet, but that's why they put it, they label it, not, note 16 says not a buildable lot without zoning relief, so.
Well, it's, well, it doesn't have frontage.
It had, it has fronted, it had, that's why it's not a buildable lot.
It has 50 feet frontage.
Right.
That qualifies as frontage? Yes.
Yes, for the time, for the time being, when they.
No, not for the time, is that?
Yes, it qualifies, yes, it does. Qualifies because it's labeled not a buildable lot.
Seems like we're just four speeding these things in.
Well, I did review it with town council, and, you know, the note's there, and, you know, they, they can't obtain any kind of building permit without zoning relief. It does, technically, that lot will have double the lot area, so it would qualify when they go and get the relief for a 50-foot frontage lot.
Okay, waiting to sit. Say a motion.
I'm going to endorse as approval under the subdivision control of not required, a plan of land in Cituit Mass and Norwell Mass, a build will not require revision of land on Clap Road, Cituit Mass, Cituit Assessor Parcels, 17-4-41, 17-2-27, and 17-2-30, and Summer and Monhope Street, Norwell Mass, Norwell Assessor Parcels, 06-022, 2B, 06-01-0102D, and 07-0023A, dated November 5, 2024, with revisions dated December 4, 2024, by Jason Scott, Professional Engineer Surveyor, Morris Engineering Company, Inc., for the applicant owner Ray F. Wilchfield Jr., family at our city, as the division of land is not a subdivision, because every lot shown on the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required by the zoning bylaw on the public way of Clap Road, or is noted in 16 for lot two as not a buildable lot without zoning relief, with the planning board stamp added that the planning board endorsement of this plan is not a determination as to conformance with zoning regulations, and note shall be added on lot two, see note 16.
Two second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
It's not, it's empty. Meeting minutes. I'm going to leave that the minutes of December 4, 4. Give second, just second. All in favor? Aye. Is there one counting? There is. Not counting. I want to approve the following requisitions for $461.
I want to approve the following requisitions for four hundred sixty-one dollars. Twenty-five cents to horse and witten group, the construction observations, a review of ninety-three Elm Street.
Side of, on favor.
I am.
You should get the watch for the M B T A computers. Which we talked about yesterday.
I have no status update to provide you. We have heard nothing from. E O A.
And that's okay, Joe.
Fair. Technically compliant till the end of the year, so we've submitted all our documentation. That's all I know.
So the way I was only for the usual target, which we already got to, so we must talk about again, isn't the is on.
So, so I just wanted to, um. You know, if anybody has any comments on the, on the draft recs, please send them to me. Uh, we, we won't be commenting till after the first of the year, but we'll make the, we'll get it in before the tenth. Right now, what our comments, um, are, is, um. So they, they say that you don't need any parking within half mile of, uh. Commuter rail station, ferry terminal, or bus station. Well, because we have Gatra, it's on the man bus service. That will stop. When you flag it to, um, technically that could consider the whole town a bus station.
You kidding me?
I'm not kidding. Not absolute thing? Yes, it doesn't go by my house. So that is one of our comments, that that is just.
Crazy. Of course, there's no parking anyway.
I thought it said bus station. But then let's get rid of that bus service. That would be great.
I mean, so that's, that's a comment that, that they understand that, you know.
If, if you put a car, then you have to go to Rosa Shop.
I don't know, man.
We don't know.
Oh, then we don't have, they're, they're saying, if you don't have to allow it, we don't, we can't allow it. But that doesn't mean you can't have it. I mean, so that's, I think, reality in the suburbs is different than reality in the city. But our point is that this is an on-demand bus service, and, and that will create problems. You know, so we also. Another comment is gonna be that we've permitted many. Accessory dwelling units by special permit, you know, and so. Special permit is reported, the registry deeds. And now you're saying they don't have to buy by some of the requirements. Well, we're giving a process in the. In our, in our information about how you can undo that, but there should be some legal piece of paper. Because when you go to sell your house in five years, somebody's gonna question things. Um, pre-existing non-conforming, non-conformities. They deliberately.
Let's get that, okay?
Sure.
Maybe, well, because. I'm not sure how that's gonna sell, someone's trying to buy that. If they don't have something, they may not be able to do those requirements on us. I'm not sure about that, but. You have some issues with those things sometimes, and I try to, we, we get people. You know, if you know, pulling things out, so that wouldn't be a crazy concern, we don't let them know, so they don't understand this process, and it's. Unique to Massachusetts. This is a federal. Regulation. They're not gonna understand from Massachusetts.
Right, and so I'm just raising, and we're just raising an issue that.
Well, no, it's going to be.
It's going to be a big issue, and somebody has to deal with it. That, that's all we're saying. You know, are you gonna put something in these regs to deal with that or not? Otherwise, we're gonna write what we want in our bylaw to deal with it. I agree with you, it's a big issue. So, pre-existing non-conformities, they deliberately didn't deal with anything about that in the regs either. And so where, where we adamant, as. Any new ADU has to conform to setbacks in the zoning bylaw. Has to be setbacks for primary dwelling. And that's, that's there, zoning is there, so let your neighbors know what, what you can potentially do. So that's an issue. Um, single-family residential zoning districts. Where. Where they're allowed single-family uses, the regulations imply that any principal dwelling can have an ADU. So that means a duplex can have an ADU. A multi-family can have an ADU if it's in a residential district. Well, we also have cottage courts. And we specifically say in our definition that a cottage court, because of its type of, because of its size and massing, cannot have an ADU. It, it just. Are we allowed to have our own requirements? You know, a duplex is supposed to have double the lot area. And we've done that over the years to protect the town. And, you know, now they're trying to say. According to how we read it this week, yes, a duplex can have one ADU. A multi-family can have one ADU. I'm not sure that that would be. I don't think that is so much of an issue, because in areas of town where we have. Pre-existing non-conforming multi-families in a residential area. The multi-family generally takes up the whole lot. So they're not gonna be able to fit an ADU in these setbacks. But it, it's questions, so. Really, any comments, we, we'll, we'll be happy to submit them.
Are you putting a climate about over occupied?
No, I wasn't going to, because that's state law, but I can put one in, please.
It's small right now that I forgot to mention yesterday, because. Uh, the question of condos came up. She said, that is not the intent, there is no plan. To go forward with anything like that. So. The condoization number that we were, you know, had all been listening to, that is not their intent, they don't plan on doing anything beyond that. That was, you know, just one of the questions that was asked yesterday. Yesterday's meeting was an inspectors meeting, so building code. Building code is gonna address the, you know, and attached. Accessory dwelling as two-family unit, you know, so building code wise. There's a lot of talk about whether these are gonna require sprinklers or not on the state side. The building code is gonna say, is gonna determine that. Zoning, which, which this is, doesn't allow. Isn't allowed to override the open code, so. They were adamant about all these things that are gonna. Impede, you know, may increase the cost to, to build an ADU, if they wanna try to eliminate. But the building code is gonna hold fast to everything that's required, you know, no matter whether this is state protected use ADU or not. And EV chargers are required in new construction, which if you do new construction ADU, you're allowed to have an EV charger.
Have to require?
Uh, in the stretch code, they're required, you know, so we do as a test on, on this requirement. So. You donate to you, whether it's for a apartment space or not, you're supposed to have.
And correct, you could modify right to not charge.
Okay.
So that.
It's a business opportunity right there.
Sorry, I was just trying to run my head a little bit, that was, that CD.
So I'm just saying, you have plenty of time to get some comments in. So if you want to, go ahead.
It's a good point, you wrote as well. No, I mean, I know it's being divorced, but I can see not over occupied if. A buys a piece of property and has a primary dwelling. Builds an ADU, rents that out, rents out the other one. This could open a whole can of worms. That I'm not sure that they're even thinking about.
No, they're not. And they're, they're, they're quietly encouraging.
Yep. What?
They're quietly encouraging that to happen. Next year.
But wait a minute, let me see if I understand this. They're quietly encouraging. Real estate people to buy a property and have a primary dwelling and an ADU.
As rented.
As, and both rented.
Do you wanna have your, do you wanna have your PC web stuff?
It's all yours.
Well, this, this doesn't pass the straight prince test.
It doesn't.
It really doesn't. Because people have discovered, first of all, it's not inexpensive to rent these places. And then, because absentee landlords have all kinds of fees and this and that. There's no continuity. This is not why we live in Situate. This is not why we're here.
The argument of home rule has to come out of something. You know, this, the M B T A law, things like that.
Throw it in, throw that away.
There, yeah, there needs to be a discussion about, you know, the removal of home rule overall. Uh, with all these state zoning requirements being, you know, implemented on.
It just seems that every time administrations change, the rules change.
It works with claims.
And so if we wait another two and a half years, maybe it'll change again.
Right, but it's already a law, so.
And you never know.
You're right.
You never know.
Statistically, I believe.
Statistically?
Statistically, though, your administration's not trying to change, so they're not allowed to change.
Well, I don't know.
I don't know, they're not valid. But if they want to, the United Community, they wanna solve the housing crisis, they need to go back and figure out quality. Because affordability, people do not feel affordability affordable housing because the paperwork is so overus. That they are discouraged from doing that. So that's where the problem started, and that did not solve the housing crisis. The M B T A is not, and this isn't either. It goes right back to Charlie Baker, call him on the phone, and tell me yes to go back, and we write it, that's where it starts. And that's when you started to move your home rule, to share it then. So, it's just. Well, it's discouraging for a board who's in shared crisis right now that we don't have any to say about the town, so.
Our, my own.
A patrol.
And that's why we're here, to protect the town. That's why we're here.
So, we get to read through the draft regulations.
Reality.
And other restricted and unreasonable and all of that. They're pulling control away.
It makes no sense to me, but.
Do we have any video talking for?
Yes. C P C, Monday night. The Situate Basketball Court renovations, they're going to come before town meeting in April with design. Cost would have that's elevated. Late application for the Bates House, as was brought up at the last meeting. This is on the top of town Situate, and the initial review by some. Whatever, to see what needs to be done, will be paid for by the town Situate from reserve funds. And then they're gonna go forward, this is gonna be a process. And then we have, um, a property acquisition called the Dishpan. And the Dishpan is on Clap Road. And it's between Booth Hill and Harris Trail. It's where the swamp is. And escape, which is all the, and what happened, you can't do that anymore. This, these two parcels, two different people. And they're approximately sixteen acres of land. The back parcel, at this moment in time, is inaccessible. But never, you never stopped anybody. So, but it, uh, the, um, the gallaster property, all impressed up there. And the other one has the verla pool in the front of it, and is somewhat landlocked. But again, as we know. People get creative, and then this is not gonna involve, so it's going to be phrased and see what happens. Um. I'm not sure who these people are. But at any rate. William Straight is one of them, and two over on Clap Road. Other one, that I'm not sure who it is. And the other thing that was discussed had to do with the C R's, the. Conservation restrictions. And that's something, the state is going nuts with all of this stuff. They are so backed up on conservation restrictions. And C P C has at least ninety thousand dollars being held to pay. The land trust to put a lot of land into C R's, it's already been dealt with. And they can't do any, there's nobody to do it. And this is statewide, and this came about during COVID, because there's nobody around to do anything. And apparently they have to figure out how to get some people in there to do something. So it's hurry up and wait. And. Then we will have, um, project that will be rescinded. The, you know, interesting point. Other than a punch list, the, um. The eight, the two million that was appropriate for the lighthouse. It will be significant money coming out. It'll be close, almost two hundred thousand dollars.
So.
Well, you know, there were still a few things that need to be done. So that will be. Which I think the estimate was, on that was correct. They wanted initially seven hundred and fifty thousand. Yeah, right. That is the.
Did they mention what, they, there's talk about more work to be done with the lighthouse keeper's house itself? They're talking about that one?
No. No. What they're talking about, what they're dealing with is the Bates House, you know? And they're waiting for big snow and the whole thing to hold.
But the lighthouse keeper's house is a terrible shape. It's hard to get your ducking.
That wasn't part of the perjury, they came in for, for the lighthouse.
Lighthouse keeper's houses.
Okay. Put that on the radar.
Anybody else with eyes or liking, Josh? So Carol, we can help our.
Um, we remain busy, we. A big box on the, on the table, eight oh three countryway came in today, so that's, uh. That's a five unit, also family.
That's in Situate.
No, Situate, yeah. We. We have two accessory dwellings we're having January ninth. Uh, we're, we also have a small cell application we're having on January twenty-third. Um, I'm expecting the, of course, you have the, the Halloway School in very soon. And I'm expecting, um, something from Endly School, um, as well. I gave you a memo of, um. A minor issue with the site and the water treatment plant due to the rain. Um, and I am very pleased that the contractor notified us of the issue. And proposed a solution, and things are being, things are being, um, implemented with that. So. We will also, January ninth, have a public hearing for the zoning workshop, and we're gonna advertise for the, um, adjustment to the fees.
Where are the, where are the A and Rs? What A and Rs? No, not the, the accessory dwellings are.
Well, thirty Marshfield, that was continued, so that, that was continued, and thirty-three B for Dan Road.
Oh, boy, okay.
So. We have quite a lot, um, to play, um, coming up, plus with our, you know. We still have a lot of projects, you know, stormwater permits, um, et cetera, outstanding, uh, work being, work being done.
Anyone else have anything to say? You have ten minutes? We'll be, we'll be in the second session.
And the ninth is our next meeting.
Yes, January, January ninth.
Um, what, we, what are you doing?
We could take a break.
Yes.
I mean, and you could, um, I mean, get the A and R prep for signature. I mean, and you could, um, I can get the A and R prep for signature.
Okay.
Um, and so, we could do that.
So whether we take a ten-minute break, so, so we'll go down even, on a second.
I made a motion that we recess for ten minutes.
There's a, on the favor.
I.